Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, October 17, 2016. Ask you all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask the City Administrator to note the roll call of all members of the council present. Move to the agenda, and we have two additions to the agenda. Neither are cost items. First one is item number seven, and that's to accept the resignation of a paramedic and to approve the authorizing of hiring a full-time paramedic to fill the vacancy. The second is a letter that Councilor Jacksaw received from Attorney General Laurie Swanson. Your pleasure with the agenda and the additions.
I'll move on both.
Motion by Councilor Drobah to approve the agenda and the additions.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the agenda? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the October 3, 2016, regular City Council meeting.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kaler to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drobah. Discussion on the motion or the minutes? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and minutes are approved. Thank you. To the resolution approving transfers and payment of claims. And we have, under the payment of claims, the City of International Falls $323,427.58. The Airport Commission claims of $4,606.56. And Library Board claims of $5,713.63. Your pleasure with the resolution to approve the payable claims.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion on the motion or the resolution?
Yes, I would like to hear from the City Administrator where we are in regard to the Eighth Street Rink because I see in the payables that we have one check alone to Corin's Plumbing for $5,000. And I was under the impression, and I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I thought we were talking about $5,000 for the entire plumbing job at Eighth Street Rink. So I'd just like to understand where we are with the total cost and where we're going to come in in relation to the estimated budget of $18,000, I think is what we thought.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Regarding the specific claim for Corin's, the total expense for that was $5,067.02. And of that, $1,769.02 were for materials. The rest was for labor and a small, about 35 and a half hours for labor, and then the gas surcharge was $32, which they apply to their bills, and that's not uncommon with contractors of this type. So the total's $5,067. I believe that, I tried to reach the street commissioner to get an update on where things were at. I have not spoke with him today, but I believe that typically we wouldn't make payment until all their work is completed on the project. In addition to that expense, the other work that was going to happen, a pole was going to go up out there. I understand the pole was up, and we've ordered a fixture for the light to go on that pole, but that has not been installed as yet. There was just over $6,000 expense for running a six-inch water main to a hydrant that's in the vicinity of the warming house at the Eighth Street Rink. That was done by city crews, and that was the material cost for the piping and the And they're doing work on the boards today. I don't know when that work will be completed, but they started work on it today. They were waiting for some pressure-treated three-eighths-inch plywood for the boards. So they've started that. I can't give you a final number on what that work is going to cost, but the plumbing work should be completed. And Corin's work was essentially running the plumbing from the hydrant into and under the building and then putting in a two-inch connection so that a hose can just be connected to the warming house building so that we can fill the hockey rink and the general skating rink with water instead of extending over 400 feet of two-inch or two-and-a-half-inch fire hose and rolling it up every time. So that's the, that should be the complete work for Corin's.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Further discussion with regard to the payable claims or the resolution? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, and the claims are, will be paid. Thank you. Go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time that's not on the agenda? Will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for audience participation. Thank you. We move to new business, and item number one under new business is to approve the mayoral proclamation proclaiming November 12 through 20, 2016, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Your pleasure with the adoption of that mayoral proclamation.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kaler to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drobah. Question on the motion or the proclamation?
Thank you to, to all the hard work. Would you like to say anything else? You need to come forward to the mic though. If the camera's going to pick up your voice.
If you want to say something.
Yeah, if you want to.
But I can.
Oh, okay.
I like attention, so.
Well, this is an important issue.
Is this a Ted Yorm?
Right. I should wait. Do you say something else?
No, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We've just had such an incredibly busy past few months with persons seeking shelter. And we've just never gotten this particular item brought forward to us before, so we wanted it to be a citywide notice. We're working really hard during the month of November, especially that week, to draw awareness to our persons who are homeless unlike persons in larger cities. We won't see our people out on the park bench or sleeping in Smokey Bear very often, yet they're in cars, couch hopping until they run out of couches to hop from, and then they seek shelter. So it's our first goal to bring awareness to people, that they know we have such many people in our small town in need of shelter. And then, we are working very hard right now in a next step program to have a shelter bigger than what we have right now. We're right now able to only serve a family at a time, and then we do all of our overflows in hotel spaces, which is probably the least efficient and most expensive way because we're not, we're not walking beside them. They're just having a Band-Aid sleepover. So that's what we're up to. We're bringing awareness and hoping to move forward in a big way such to have our own facility. So this is one of the steps.
Thank you to you and to all of the organizations that are listed here in the proclamation that help with the homelessness and the hunger.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and proclamation is approved and will be advertised. Thank you. Item number two under new business is a resolution approving a commercial loan in the amount of $24,999.99 to Border State Bank for Tony Palm doing business as Border Boxes. And Tony is here, and Cindy Usso as President of the Border State Bank. If you wish to come forth, thank you. Good afternoon.
On behalf of Tony Palm, I'm requesting the proposed commercial loan program for Tony's entity, Palm's Properties LLC. It is a sole member LLC. Border State Bank has approved two commercial loans of just under $25,000 each to make repairs necessary to move his expanding businesses to their new location at the spot. This restaurant building has been vacant for well over a year, and the bank is very happy to get it sold. We closed on that transaction last week, and I feel it's in the best interest of the community to support this request. He will be operating Border Boxes and Epic Threads out of the building, and I'll let Tony cover the details.
Thank you. Mayor Anderson, Council. I'm not used to being on this side. I'm usually the banker. So it's, it is a privilege to be able to ask for this commercial loan program. I've been on Cindy's side a few different times, and it is a worthy program, and it does help renovate some of the businesses that need some renovating. So, the other day, I had five spare minutes, and I decided, why don't I buy a building? Why don't I move Border Boxes? And so, with that, I worked with Cindy, and we came to a, to an agreeable amount, and I purchased, purchased the spot last week. Prior to that, I worked with Ken Anderson, and I had Kelly Myers walk through the property and discuss what it is that I'm doing. A couple of the major things that need to be done, I do have bids for, and I didn't have them when the, when it was put on the agenda, but the two rooftop air conditioners are shot. They're, they're in dire needs of replacement. Thank goodness, right now I don't need air conditioning, but that's the next thing I need to look at. So, the air conditioning, and then along with updating the heating system. The heating system is a, it's a large boiler system that is quite inefficient and probably could be on its last legs also. So I've been working with, with Shannon's on getting some bids. They had winterized the property, so they were the best ones to work with. Other than that, in the process, we're going to have to tear out a few walls. We're going to open it up a little bit in there. So Border Boxes is going to be in, in the main area, and then Epic Threads is going to be in another side area. And for those that don't know, currently Epic Threads is in my, is in the basement of Border Boxes, and it just, it's outgrew itself. It's too small down there, and I want to get my workers upstairs where they can see some light too, so it makes sense to do this. So along with walls being replaced, new lighting. I've been working with Ted Brokaw, who has put me in contact with somebody from Minnesota Power that can come in and do an assessment for me. I'm sure I'm going to be using some LED lighting so that we can, you know, most cost-efficient and that type of thing. So I've also been in contact with an electrician that's approved to do that, so we can get that process going fairly quickly. As you know, both of my businesses are extremely busy during the Christmas season, so my timing of this maybe is not the most ideal, but there's an aggressive timeline to be in there before the busy season, so. I guess this will also help alleviate, you know, maybe some parking issues that have been showing up downtown. My trucks will have a nice place to back into, and I'll be removing some signs also. I'm going to put bigger ones on the spot. No, just kidding. Just kidding. I, of course, if I do put up signs, I'll make sure they're approved signs. Also looking at, there's also a building there that the last time I visited with the council, I'm paying rent on the land for, and looking at moving that also. So, it won't be immediate, you know, give me some time, but we won't be needing that uptown. My plans for the uptown store, I really don't have any quite yet, if I'm going to lease it or look to sell it. My understanding is from, from the local realtors that there's, there's been some nice activity uptown, and there's not a lot of properties left, so. And there still is people in, with interest in our downtown, which is great. I love it. If I could have stayed uptown, I, you know, I definitely would have. It's, it was a great location for me, but I just need more space. It'll be better.
Good. Council's pleasure then with the resolution to approve the loan.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs.
And I'm pleased to second Briggs' motion.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Questions or discussions on the resolution or for Mr. Palm?
I would just like to thank them for their growing and investing in their business, into the community. And I can attest, I've been to the basement, and yes, and I've made some jokes about the workers, but we won't share them here. But, and it is very busy, and they do need more room, and that's a good sign.
Great, great having interest and investment in our community, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the signs down.
I knew, I knew I would touch somebody real close.
I think many people are.
And what, again, what signs?
You're just going to move them to the spot, right?
They've outgrew their purpose. I have to, I'd have to put too many signs up for everything we do not.
We talked about it when you first bought the building, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Further questions or discussion? Question on the motion then to approve the resolution?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, and loan is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three under new business is to approve a 3.2 on-sale license for the Voyagers Restaurant LLC for Gerald Netland. Gerald, I don't know if you want to come forth. If you want to stay there, you're fine. Council's pleasure with the approval of the license.
I'll make the motion to approve the license.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs to approve the 3-2 license. Discussion on the motion or the license?
It's one of the licenses that we have to, is this like a regular liquor license where we only have a certain amount that we give out, or? No?
There's no limit.
No, no limit?
3-2 is not. It's whether you get to the liquor, that's when.
Or not.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and the liquor license is approved. Thank you.
3-2 beer license?
3-2, yes. On-sale license is approved. Thank you. Item number four under new business is to approve the membership in the National Joint Powers Alliance, authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign the membership agreement. And there is no cost to being a member of the National Joint Powers Alliance. Would ask your pleasure with that.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve that membership.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the membership.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Question on the motion or the membership? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Membership is approved. Thank you. Item number five is Planning Commission recommendation to approve the draft request for proposals for professional services to update the comprehensive plan, the land use regulations, and subdivision regulations of the city. And furthermore, to authorize publication, distribution to service providers. Your pleasure with the approval of the draft request for proposals.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the request for proposals.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the RFP?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'd like to first compliment our city administrator for all of the time he put into this and how comprehensive this is. But I do have a few comments about it tonight. As far as the housing portion of it goes, which is on page, gee, I just had it here too. Just give me a minute. Page 12. Thank you. Our housing, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the uses of this comprehensive plan, and one of the reasons we're doing it, among others, is to be able to write grants for housing projects and, you know, actually implement some of the recommendations and needs we see in the community. So, I find that element number one needs a little bit of expansion. If I look at the housing study that was completed by Hibbing back in 2010, the key findings were, and I want to make sure we have, we get this, right? They, they broke down, they actually projected demand out five years, and the kinds of housing and the demographics who would use that kind of housing. And if we are to capitalize on this document, we need that kind of projection. So I would want that. And, so I want that to be clear in the housing study. And I guess in general, I would want that description to ensure that the data that is created and given to us will be data that you normally find in applications for grants so that we get what we need. The Housing Committee, you know, our standing residential and commercial building advisory committee, will be using this study, so.
Thank you. City Administrator, any comments?
I would agree wholeheartedly with that. It is very abbreviated in its present form. I think the intent with the language talking about life cycle, housing needs, infers that some of that information will be put together, but I think it's better to be clear and provide as much clarity as we can for firms proposing, so I would probably suggest that we add some language to that particular section, because I know it has been a particular area of focus for the, the committee that the council referenced, as well as her personally, and I agree that housing is a, just given the age of our housing stock, I think we need to do a fairly in-depth assessment and then project what we need to do going forward in the future. So I would, I would agree that we should add some language to the effect that she discussed.
All right. We would allow you the latitude of putting that in.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Also, you'll note that at the end of the document, we talk about additional information and links, and that's incomplete. We don't have links. We're actually going to upload our current comprehensive plan onto the website, and that's not there yet. I think there was a retail study that was done for Voyage Forward, and we had done some survey work. We probably want to make sure that that can be referenced by the contractors, because I think it will reduce the amount of time and effort they, they have to put into what they're doing for us, but will help the outcomes and the policies that end up going into the comprehensive plan by having that addition. You can also see on that last page, number four references the County Comprehensive Plan. That's a copy I have going back to 2001. My staff is not able to find that online, so that's something that we would either scan and put it on ourselves or see if they have it somewhere that we haven't been able to find it. But that would be important to try and tie in the county's policies and the City of Rainier's with what we're doing here in the International Falls, and that's actually required by statute.
Mr. Administrator, I think there is a copy of that plan at Gutaska, of the, not of the whole comprehensive plan, but of the housing portion anyway. So, you may.
I guess the bottom line is I just want to reserve, I hope the council is comfortable that we add additional sources of information that can be referenced via the web without including that as part of our RFP, because it would be very large if we did that. So, we've included the Newmark Grub study and other information on there as well. The Gateway Center Design Plan that was done in 2008, that would be included as well.
And having read through the 22 pages of this document, I would certainly concur with Councilor Jacksaw. I think you've done an excellent job, but just to make sure that I have a clear understanding of what we're asking of the, those that might be interested in contracting with the city. We're looking to have a comprehensive plan developed, and the cost of doing that as well. We're looking to have our land use regulations or zoning regulations updated, and then our subdivision regulations or platting regulations updated. Are we looking to have those last two items, the land use and the subdivision, as a separate or an add-on to the comprehensive plan cost so that, so that we have a breakdown of the three of those, or are we looking to have a lump sum?
Well, it's exactly what you suggested, is that we would have a separate fee for all three of those in the event that, and we're uncertain as to what the cost would be for that. We'll have an opportunity to drop some component of that if we need to, just to stay within our budget if we have to. So ideally, we'd be able to do all three of those. I would say that the comprehensive plan and the land use regulations would be the highest priority, and the platting regulations would be secondary.
I concur with that. Thank you. Further questions or discussions with regard to the RFP for the comprehensive plan? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and the request for proposals for professional services to update the plan is approved. Thank you. Item number six is an information item, and that's the emergency management training for elected and senior officials of the city and county. Their roles and responsibilities in disaster situations, public information in emergencies that will be held on October 26 from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that will be conducted by Mr. Joe Kelly, and he's with the state, I believe TSA and other organizations. So those that wish to attend that, that will be over at the Law Enforcement Center Training Item number seven is the addition, excuse me?
Before we leave that one?
Please.
I talked to Willie Koscheck, and he told me today that they need a head count of how many people from the board would be going to that event.
So if you have an RSVP'd, we need to have you do that?
Yes.
Call to Willie.
I have a question.
Please.
Is there a way of attending that without, with, is there a way of going online and getting this training?
No, not this one, not this time. It's in person.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to item seven under new business, and that's to accept the resignation of full-time paramedic Lisa Mortensen and approve her, approve her appointment as a casual paramedic effective November 14 of 2016, and furthermore, authorizing the hiring of a full-time paramedic to fill the vacancy. Chief Manasa, do you, do you want, anything you want to add to that, or?
I guess the only thing I would like to add is not, you do have Lisa's resignation letter in my proposal. I guess the only thing I would like to say is this is something Lisa's been thinking about for a long time. She did have a resignation in either April or May, I don't remember which, and it got pulled at the last minute. She did change her mind. But this is a, this has been a tough decision for her, and it's something she's struggled with for a while. She's got some, some stuff she's dealing with that she would like to focus on rather than a full-time job at this time, so. I don't believe it's anything job-related that's, that's making her want to quit the job. She did not get a different one. It's just she's got to focus on a little bit different topic for a while, so. This has been her request, and she would like to stay on as a casual paramedic, so. At this time, I would like to honor that request. I think we could use her and, and again, authorize the hiring of a new full-time paramedic to fill that void.
Council's pleasure with accepting that resignation.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Question or questions for the chief or with regard to the resignation and appointing the, authorizing the hiring of a full-time paramedic to fill the vacancy?
So, Mr. Mayor, the motion is to do both, accept the letter of resignation and allow moving forward to hire a full-time replacement?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I didn't understand that, but I'm fine with that, so.
I guess the, you see the possibility of I guess the, do you see the possibility of filling that vacancy with a full-time paramedic being something that can be done?
Yes, I, we do have, currently, we have two casual paramedics. They would be eligible for that job, and I've also had, oddly enough, timing is amazing, I've had inquiry from two other paramedics about full-time positions in International Falls. So, we could have potentially four good candidates to choose from.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Other questions?
I think I had asked about the impact of the airplane versus the helicopter. Are you going to provide an analysis of that at some future date, like in November?
I certainly can do that. I would like to sit down with the mayor and Counselor Briggs before I do so, just to make sure I'm not, again, I want to make sure the information is clear and accurate before we do that.
Okay. If it did have an impact on our volume, I think we need to know, at least know what it is, if we can discern that even, but.
Absolutely. And the way it's been rolling so far, it hasn't been, we don't have enough data, enough time to collect accurate data at this point, so hopefully, we'll be able to do so in the timeframe you're looking for.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions or discussion with regard to the motion to accept the resignation and approve the authorizing of the hiring?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Just a point of information, the council had previously authorized the city to hire an additional two casual paramedics, over and above the two that we have already, to just help us fill in during the busy times, vacation, sick leave, that type of thing. I think with the opportunity that sounds like it's available before us with a couple casual paramedics that may apply for this full-time position, in addition to two other persons, I think as part of this hiring process, I'm assuming that if we find that one or both of these other persons are interested in working perhaps in a casual capacity that, because the council's already established two additional casual positions, that we may be able to do that as part of this process, and the council would be comfortable with us doing that if we felt that they were qualified and capable, and they were willing to serve in a casual capacity versus full-time. Are you okay with that?
I certainly would be. Council members.
Yeah, we've already approved.
We've already authorized those positions.
But I just know it's very difficult throughout the entire region, five state and beyond, to try and find qualified EMTs and paramedics to fill some of these positions. So, if we've got an additional two people that are in and around the community that are willing to serve in this capacity, I think we should really take advantage of it. Hard to find qualified licensed people to do that work.
Further discussion. Three, none. Chair would then call the question to accept the resignation and authorize the hiring of a full-time paramedic to fill the vacancy. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes. Motion is carried. Resignation is accepted, and authorization for hiring a full-time is granted. Thank you. Item number eight, under New Business, is to set the special meeting to canvass the 2016 municipal election results. That would be following the November 8 election.
I'll move.
Well, I think we need to, we need to secure a date now. Is Friday, the 11th, being a Veterans Day? Is that a holiday?
Actually, Mayor, there's restricted. There are some restricted dates, and those are, the first day that we can do it is Saturday, the 12th, and I believe it goes to, I wrote it down, and I don't have it in front of me, it's the 12th to the 18th. It would be the Saturday after the Veterans Day holiday, which is Friday, the 11th, and we can do it anytime, starting on that Saturday through the 18th.
Given that that's deer season and a weekend, I don't think it'd be wise to try to have a meeting on a Saturday, so.
Well, I'm just saying, that's the dates that the state allows us to do it, so any date.
How about Monday, the 14th? Is there a time on Monday, the 14th that would be acceptable to the council?
1:00? Anytime after 1:00 works for me.
What, 4:00?
Anytime 1:00 for you.
1:00? I'm sure it's going to be a short meeting of just minutes, but 1:00 on?
1:00 on Monday, the 14th?
Okay.
Since this would be my first time ever canvassing election results, what is that? I realize it's counting or?
We get the report from the judges as to what their findings were in the election, and then approve those, unless there's some question or there's a need for a recount.
Mr. Mayor, that would just be, this council would only be certifying the results of the municipal election for locally.
The two races.
Right. And the county's schedule, theirs, for 9:00 that same day on Monday, the 14th.
We will have a special meeting on Monday, November 14, at 1:00 p.m. for the canvassing of the 2016 municipal election results. Item number nine is the resolution modifying Resolution Number 5611, implementing the GASP B-54 and establishing the fund balance policy at the request of Counselor Jacksaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion that we change our Resolution 5611 to state that our, rather than maintaining a general fund balance of 50% of our general fund expenditures, that we have that fund balance at 50% at the end of the year. At the end of the year, that is our high point, so it's an easier mark to make, that we will then not hopefully be in violation once we take some minor steps.
And I guess, let's have a motion then first for?
That's my motion, too.
That's your motion? Okay.
My motion is to reword or modify Resolution 5611 to state that we will maintain a general fund balance at year-end of 50% of our budgeted general fund expenditures, rather than maintain throughout the year. Maintain is what it says now, throughout the year, implying that.
I'd second that.
Second by Counselor Kaler.
Because I do believe, if I may speak out of?
Please.
That we may, I think we're in violation now, right now, so. And we don't, I mean, you know, this, this, the intent of the GASP is to just make it, you know, bring to our attention and keep on our radar the need to maintain a certain balance in the general fund. It is not any magic number we need. They recommend 40%. We're, this is 50, so.
And we could lower it to 40?
We could lower it to 40. At this point, I would hesitate to do that without understanding the cash balance, which is about $800,000 lower.
Given that we won't receive monies then until probably June of the following year.
July and December, then.
Yeah, July. Okay. Please.
Is this something that the administrator and staff would be able to let us know where we're at when we start our budget process, so we'd know and reason whether we're close or not?
Mr. Administrator? I think, I think from a, the short answer to the, at least as far as staff's recommendation would be, is I, I have no, I would probably encourage the motion as it's been submitted, because it gives the council a little bit more flexibility. And as she indicated, the important thing with having a minimum amount of fund balance held in reserve is that we need to go the first six months of the year until the first week roughly in July, before we get our first local government aid payment and our first property tax settlement for taxes that are received by the county in May. So, that's why the number, and the state generally recommends nothing lower than 40%, and this council previously has established 50%. But the way it was written is it says maintain that, and so we would have to have 50% of our annual general fund expenditures at the end of June, and so it affords us more flexibility, and it's clearly an important issue, and I agree with the 50% number. I would like to be a little bit more conservative than what the state minimum recommendation of 40% is. But, for instance, this year, we didn't even really get our audit until August, and if we got the audits a little bit earlier, last year, at the end of 2015, we were at 58%, I think is what the auditors established that number at. I looked at it back in May, I thought we were still at around 52%, but was a rough, you know, guestimate rather than doing an analysis. I think it is important for us to track that and keep, keep track of it. When the city goes through its budgeting process, it's typically in August, and we have to approve a preliminary budget for the following year by the end of September and send that to the county auditor. So, that's when the council would really get into the real throes of what we're going to do for the following year's budget, and we can provide that number to show where we're at, and that would be just after we've got our July local government aid and property tax payment. So, we need, we can look at that periodically. The change in the language, though, will afford more flexibility, and will be easier for us to meet the standard. Otherwise, we have to have more money held in reserve that wouldn't necessarily be spent at all, it would just be to maintain this arbitrary fund balance.
City Administrator, I'd like to build on the question that Counselor Briggs has, and ask, are we in a position, is administration and the finance department in a position to give us a figure at the end of the fiscal year, December 31st? Or are we better to wait for the audit, auditors to give us a figure as to exactly where we are?
We'd provide a number when we reconcile the December books, and that would be by mid-January of the following month. We could, we could come up with a number, but it would be unaudited. And so, there are significant audit adjustments that are made with journal entries and stuff, so it would be subject to change after the auditor reviews our books. It's one of the things, though, I think with our new finance officer, that I want to alleviate or at least minimize them making significant journal entries and those types of things. I'd like to do that at a staff level before the end of the year, and it would be unaudited until they come in, in April or May of the following year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, that is one of the findings we've always had, is that they do all the adjusting entries, and it's not uncommon for city finance offices, offices to have that, where the auditors do the adjusting entries. But now that, thanks to Brian and the administrator leading the charge here, we have someone, I think, who can do the adjusting entries. And actually, I'd like to see them done every month, so we have a month-to-month fund balance. And I think you'll find that if you have someone of Katie's skill, that these fund balances are going to be essentially correct.
Of course, I think the cash balance and the fund balance is certainly going to be, going to be waven, and it's not going to be, I mean, we could be, could be going up and down. I don't think we ought to throw our hands up and, you know, declare that we've got an emergency or anything of that nature, and that's why I'm concerned about, even in January of the following year, given that it's unaudited, if we found ourselves at 48%, you know, instead of at 50, that we would have to lay people off or do some, take some action to make sure that we're not going to go below the 50% mark. So, I think that we ought to be careful about what we do here. Yes, this is a resolution. I agree with the terms of it, but I just want to not, just not get overly excited about making any drastic changes because of a figure that we have, and some assumptions that are going to be made along the way also.
Right. The other, the important thing to keep in mind, again, is that this, this policy applies only to the general fund expenditures. We have significant monies that we hold in reserve for the 402 Capital Outlay Fund, the PI Fund, so we have other cash reserves. If we got into a scenario that you were referring to, we could take other uncommitted monies or unrestricted monies and put it in the general fund to make it balance if we had a situation like that. I would prefer not to have to do that, but that's something that could be done. It may be something that would be more appropriate for us to defer, if you wanted, to a Budget and Finance Committee meeting, where I could have both of our finance staff here to, you know, prepare for a discussion about this, to see what the options are, and then maybe discuss with the auditor. I did have a short conversation with staff and the auditor about if we, if we did a monthly reconciliation, I think we would have to do it on the accrual basis versus a cash basis, and then it becomes more time-consuming for them to have to do that on a monthly basis, and it was probably recommended to only do it annually for a city of our size, but, but that would be something I'd want to have more conversation with. And of course, Counselor Jacksaw, being a CPA, she probably knows more of the nuances of this than.
This, aren't we kind of actually, isn't this what we're kind of doing anyhow without saying it, from what I'm understanding here, with our balances? I mean, we're not constantly, right, that's what I got, we're changing this, because right now, we're not keeping that balance that would go along the year.
We aren't.
So, it wouldn't really be any different doing it, just making it official that we do it at that one time of year instead of?
Agreeing with what we do.
Yes.
But if we have an unaudited figure in the January of the next year, and it appears to be below the 50% mark, what actions are we going to take is the concern that I have? And we're making, even, even at best, when they give us that figure in January, they're going to be making some assumptions that, that could have some clarification to them.
Whenever we get the audit back from the auditors, it's going to be retroactive to a date certain, which would be December 31st of the previous year. So, that's what our fund balance is going to be. And the question is, is how many adjustments occur between, by the auditors, based on what they, what we provide at a staff level and what we have in our various funds? How many adjustments have to be made to that? We should be able to anticipate what those are, for the most part, and there shouldn't be. Or somewhere, which would be rare, we have not had.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I think, you know, on one of the sheets, I showed you the, the state of the general fund balance over time, and so why, while we, and we've seen some deterioration in it quite a bit, actually, from '08, it was 70% down to 50. What I project is, my projection, 49% at the end of this year. So, we've seen decline, and so my hope is that we focus a little more on this particular resolution, and we think about how we can improve the general fund balance in the long run and address some basic financial dynamics that's happening in the city and can improve it for us. So, in other words, to be real blunt, I mean, absent some major influx of an employer, and absent some magnificent growth within the city limits, which is what we all hope for, what are we going to do in the long run to put the city's finances on a stronger footing than it is today? Now, that's not to say we're in trouble by any means, but we will be if we don't think about how we're going to solve that problem. And we have plenty of time to do it, but we need to be aware of it, first of all, and then we need to think about how to approach the problem. And I have some ideas, but I won't bring those up now.
Further questions or discussion with regard to the modifying the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes. Motion is carried, and resolution changes are adopted. Move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything that I want to just call out, other than under Correspondence, I did include a, a article by MinPost, which talks about the ballot amendment to the state constitution, and talks about what you need to know, and that was referenced by some other agencies as being a good document that talks about the pros and cons of the ballot amendment to the state constitution, and that's under Correspondence, dated September 9th. So, you might want to refer to that. If you or any of your constituents have any questions, that's a kind of good summary document of that, so I don't have anything further.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing special to report, very, lots of activity on the criminal side of things, very busy in court today and tomorrow, and. very busy in court today and tomorrow and. As obviously forbidden, apparently we seem to have had a lot of recent drinking.
I have one question for City Attorney, if I may. Do we have a court date on the buildings or facilities that we are looking to remove?
We do not yet. We haven't been able to locate the one. Followed through on that commitment, so process of chasing them down to find the agreement to have a. Other one, by the time we get into court, it's, it's probably not going to be able to come down until spring, I would guess.
Very good, thank you. Other questions for the City Attorney? Chief?
I have a question.
Thank you. Chief Manasa?
Yeah, I just. Part of this is pursuant to keeping enacted roster, which we have not had now since March, so we're trying to get our roster updated. We've got several good applicants on the roster now. Council after that testing to look for approval of five to seven of those people.
The, the Fire Civil Service Commission is involved in that process?
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Chief Manasa? You, we'll go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions.
Mayor?
Please.
I had a discussion, I'm just wondering if infrastructure addressed today, children at play sign at 9th Street and 7th Avenue?
Yes.
Was that on your agenda?
Yes, it was. The, the committee did meet today and we, we haven't prepared a written report to the council yet and we can tell you what, what our recommendation is going to be if you want to hear that now. And that's that the Public Works Director and Street Commissioner shared with us that the policy has been with regard to, in the residential areas, with regard to children at play signs is to have the homeowners or the neighbors purchase a sign and put it up on the inside of the sidewalk or on the inside of a ditch if it's a area that's more rural in nature. And so we would look to recommend that the neighborhood in that area of 7th Avenue between 8th and 9th Street that they would, that they would purchase a sign if they wish to or several signs to children at play. Because there's a, there continues to be, as, as children age and they, they move out of the neighborhood, signs end up remaining there and there's no children left, so we leave it up to the, the homeowners to do that. Now, if it's something more significant like a deaf child or a blind child, that is covered under state law and the city would be responsible to be putting up those, those type of signs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you know the cost offhand?
We asked that and he said, no, it wasn't, sir.
Okay, because I, I had told one of my constituents that I, you should call.
Well, and I, I just talked to Councilor Briggs outside of the, the city council forum about possibly the VFW purchasing some stuff to try to help out because that's a community development thing that the VFW could help out with. That's outside the, the range, but we might be able to work with that.
Thank you. So should I have this person call?
I think they already have.
Oh, okay. All right, great. And then I guess the other thing is, I guess I should let the council know I'm going to the county board meeting on October 25th to discuss the Minnesota, the EIT law, okay? And then lastly, I would say that I, I would like some, I'd like to clarify some confusion that I've heard out there about how the city council came to lose its HRA benefit. When I was counselor from '08 to '13, I believe, or '12?
12.
12. We received an HRA benefit of 800 a month. It was Betty Bergstrom that came forward and informed us that our consultant that handles the HRA advised her that we can no longer accept that benefit because in order to comply with the law under the Affordable Care Act, we would need to be on the city's health insurance plan. So the council therefore had no choice because we weren't going to be asking to be put on the health, on the city's healthcare plan to abandon our benefit. And that's how that came to be. We lost that benefit because of the Affordable Care Act. And it was a legal requirement.
Well, Councilor Jacksaw, I think also I, you know, the mayor and the city council previously were receiving $6,000 a year and I felt that that was an excessive cost to the city and I asked that we, we dropped that. I would not accept that in the first year when I came on in 2013 and, and the council then the following year dropped it for everyone. And you may have, may believe that it was part of, of the Affordable Care Act, but also I, I was opposed to us receiving that, that benefit. Further reports of mayor, council committees, boards and commissions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Next city council meeting, I will not be here. My family and I are going to be heading out of town for a short while. Secondly, and I brought it up earlier at the public works meeting and I just want to expand upon it. If I, if I am correct, when we talked about the annexation, when we did in the past, we decided that we were not going to annex the Donahue property pending review from the Donahue Advisory Committee. Well, that, if I am correct, has now been dissolved because the work has been done on that and the use is going to be to be inside the city for a park or recreational area. So is this something now that we can look at annexing the Donahue property since we, we're not going to annex it because we were looking at what the possible use could be? Now that we've got past the possible use and we've had a committee look at it, is this something we can bring back up for annexation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I would indicate that.
City Attorney.
That's not a topic the committee even addressed. We, we did not discuss annexation at all. So the, the group that looked at this, they didn't look at that topic, but.
Right, I understand, but that was part of the, the original reason on why we didn't annex it is because we were looking at what, what uses it would have, would it be best to be sold and given to some, or for a different purpose or used for city purpose? And at this point, if it's going to be a recreational area, it makes sense that it would be inside the city so that we can have it annexed.
I would concur with Councilor Droban. Thank you for being, following this and so it doesn't fall off our radar. I would agree with you, it should be.
I think there was a, there was a number of items in annexation recommendations to the council and so that was only one of them. You know, certainly don't have any, any issues with, with the annexation. I'm, I guess I'm wondering out loud if we might not want to wait till we go through the comprehensive planning process just to have that reviewed as, as part of that process.
Fair enough. I just wanted to bring that back up.
Further reports of the council committees, boards and commissions? Here none. Anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council? Dan McCarthy?
Well, here, quite brief here. First, this is more of an education and training question here. Item number two here, I want to make clear I'm not opposed to these type of loans here that we're talking about, but number one, is this from the general fund, the money?
No.
Where does it come from?
A bank.
It comes from a bank? Okay, well, the item, there's a reason why it's 24,999 here rather than, say, 25,000. What is that reason?
Administrator?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the state law has a requirement that the city enter into a business subsidy agreement for any amount, $25,000 or above. So for any amount, $25,000 or above, the city has to enter into a business subsidy agreement and then there's a lot of reporting that goes along with it.
Okay.
So previous city councils has set the limit for that loan program at the maximum $24,999 and any cents.
Okay.
So we avoid the business subsidy agreement requirements.
Okay, I do understand what you're saying, right.
But we do provide that money out of a city fund. I believe it's the, well, I don't want to say for sure, I can't remember which fund, but we have a fund that has just over $100,000 in it that we make these loans from and there's sufficient funds or monies in the fund to make these loans. So we've made a couple of them here in the last year and so it is city money, but it requires, Moose Lodge was one of them, that's.
What else was in there?
One was done last summer sometime with Showblums. I can't remember the address, but, so they received them. So those are some of them that have been approved over the last year.
I think it's the commercial loan program.
Right.
Yeah, and there's a hundred and fourteen.
What's the fund number? I don't know the fund number.
Uh, 814 and it, right now, at the end of September, there was $124,000 in there. And there is a detailed receivable ledger you can get from Betty if you want to know.
No, 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 I just was wondering because now I have a better understanding here of this, but it's in the overall picture and that's the main thing. Second question here, here it is, it's October 17th. Is anybody in this August group here aware of whether there's a director appointed as a Voyagers National Park director or do we still have an acting director here?
The Voyagers National Park still has an acting superintendent at this time?
The promise at a meeting here by Mr. Mike Ward here, out here at one of these light meetings was that the intention was to have it done by the fall and that the regional director was going to be involved here. So I, I know where it stands and I'm, I'm not objecting to it, I'm just asking this question. And the third thing, education, is the letter that you received from the attorney general here relative to what you were talking about?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Not correspondents is listed. Next regular city council meeting will be Monday, November 7 at 4:30 p.m. Nothing further to come before the council, we'll stand adjourned.